All right, I call to order the North Andover School Committee meeting of Thursday, May 1st, 2025, if you will join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we are going to start out with the... Do you want me to swap? We can swap it. We can do public comment first. Oh, never mind, we have consent agenda first. We have the minutes of April 3rd, 2025.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of April 3rd, 2025, as presented in the packet.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. I should have been able to... Uh, no, he's gonna be late. All right, um, any comment on the minutes?
Thank you to Ms. McHugh for getting... They were long, and they were good.
Yeah.
Thank you, Michelle.
She was busy during school vacation.
All right, I will take a vote. Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. Moskovich?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Those are approved. All right, Cece, do you want to do public comment first? Do you think they'll make it, or?
Harper's on her way, so she will.
Okay, so let's do public comment first. Um, so we're gonna open it up to public comments. Um, first, we... I know Mr. Brian Coppola is here to make a public comment, if you wanted to come up first. I just ask you to state your name and address, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and members of the School Committee of North Andover, Massachusetts. I am here to, um, put forward an idea of a course for our curriculum to make a graduation requirement. As you know, with the passage of the ADA that's happened about 35 years ago, more and more people with disabilities are out in the community. More and more, things are becoming accessible, but more and more, still, things need to be made accessible. And that includes... And that includes with attitude. Today, for instance, a blind person, when they go into a store, they need the assistance of somebody to help them find something, or to help read the price. It is important that when the... That when high schoolers take the jobs of working in stores, that they know how to handle that professionally, as disability are gonna be part of life, no matter what career they may have. Therefore, what I am proposing and suggesting to you is that a course in disability awareness training be offered and made a graduation requirement in... For high school students. And preferably, the ideal time, I think, would be to teach it is when the students reach their junior or senior year of high school, because at that time, some of them, most of them may be working in part-time after-school jobs. The other... And also, the idea... Another idea in this part of this course would be to match students up with disabled individuals, or have them, um, do a community service with disabled individuals, and have them write an essay or a paper on the topic. And you teach... Also teach them the history of disabilities and education of the disabled, and you grade them with each... With the graduation requirement I'm proposing. I'm proposing that the grade to complete for graduation would be a C or better, as they need to demonstrate what they're learning and should demonstrate what they're learning, to make the diploma true value. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Matthew Ruth here, 61 Brentwood Circle. I just came tonight. I just wanted to let all of you know, uh, that we have been... Myself and several other people in the community have been trying to work to get the word out about this current budget and get people in the seats next week, uh, for the town meeting to get this budget passed. Uh, but I would like to also propose that going forward in the future, maybe after town meeting next week, that we form some sort of subcommittee with community members to tackle the hurdles that we're gonna face with next year needing a debt exclusion, as well as, um... Excuse me, my allergies have bothered me. Uh, debt exclusion, as well as the override. There's a lot of people within the community, myself included, that would be willing to help and work with you guys, because it's gonna be a giant hurdle to overcome, and I think that there's a lot of people willing to help and looking to help. So, that's all I have to say, so I hope that that's something that we can... We can work on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Joseph Hicks, 49 Bradstreet Road. Uh, Vice Chair of the School Committee, but right now I'm speaking only as a private citizen. I'd like to just spend a moment talking about inclusion. Two weeks ago, the Secretary of Health and Human Services delivered a speech about autism. He characterized autism as a rapidly growing epidemic with environmental toxins to blame. At the crux of his argument is reductionism, that autism is a singular experience, it is preventable and curable disease, and he is wrong, he's being harmful, and we must do the best we can to refute... And to refute his ideas loudly and publicly. We have students in our town and in our schools that have been diagnosed with autism. The manifestation of ASD and the impact on our students and their families varies. Autism is not one thing. It is a word that we use to describe a spectrum of behavioral strengths, differences, and vulnerabilities. And it is true that some of our students need more intense supports than others. But, our students with ASD do not need to be fixed or cured. They deserve to be seen, supported, and celebrated. They deserve to be treated with dignity and valued as full members of our community. To our families in North Andover who experience living with ASD each day, you are not tragic, you are not incapable, you are not unworthy, you are not sick, and you do not need to be fixed or cured. You are beautiful, you are loved, and you are welcome here, just as you are. Your presence, as you exist right now in our community and in our schools, is what's best for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. All right, we're gonna move on to the Student Representative Report.
Okay, I'm gonna talk really slowly, 'cause Harper's driving by the high school right now. Okay. Um, let's see. I'm gonna start with stuff I know. So, the Massachusetts Association of Student Representatives is having a virtual meeting this Saturday, so that's super cool for, um, high school students who are interested in the position I am sitting in right now. Um, AP testing is starting next week, and I think it'll be going on for two weeks. Um, oh, there's Harper. Junior prom is May 9th. Tickets are still on sale... They're not on sale anymore. Um, and table forms were filled Wednesday. Oh, so they're not on sale. The tables are filled, guys. Um, and the junior class was also talked to about getting their senior photos done with Gekis on Wednesday. Do Be Nice Week, which is an event the student council hosts, which promotes kindness within the community of the high school, starts in two weeks. Um, and elections for clubs are coming up. Um, oh, also, today, May 1st, is the beginning of AAPI Month, Asian Pacific Islander Month. Um, and the ASA, which is the Asian Student Association of the High School, is going to have an Asia Night, which they're bringing back for the first time in three years, is going to be Wednesday, May 21st. Um, they're in the works of fun things planned ahead. Oh, and today was Where Your Future Decision Day for seniors.
Cece, what are you sporting today, for the record?
Bentley University.
Amazing. And Harper, what are you sporting today, for the record?
Um, George Washington University.
Amazing.
Um, the Ann Bradstreet Poetry finalist and winner readings are this Saturday at the Common. The rain date is May 10th. Um, and then, last week, over April break, uh, there were two trips, the Ireland trip, um, which I myself went on, and the France trip. Both trips went very well, students had a lot of fun. I've been seeing lots of pictures posted, and, um, all good things. Um, also, seniors have forms to fill out about Senior Week, both, um, forms RSVPing to different Senior Week events and choosing food for events, as well as RSVPing for the SOS, um, senior, like, all-night party. Oh, sorry. Um, and Senior Prom is May 28th. Tickets went on sale a couple days ago, uh, and the form for, um, students to submit the people they wanna sit with, um, for prom also went live.
Wow, a lot of exciting end-of-year stuff.
Just one thing to add on to the SOS all-night graduation party. So that is a tremendous opportunity for community members to volunteer. I've... And they ask for parents who aren't parents of seniors to volunteer. So this will be my third year or fourth year doing it, and it is a very well-run... I mean, it's been for the children... For the kids, it's a great one program, but even for volunteers, if you're thinking about doing it, it's very well-run, it's a great opportunity to just, you know, quickly get in there and see what's happening and volunteer and give your time back. So by the time our kids are there, you know, there's more parents coming up and volunteering. So it's a great opportunity. Would encourage people to sign up.
Um, where is Junior Prom gonna be?
Um, I believe Junior Prom is at Black Swan. Um, and then Senior Prom is at Castleton.
Awesome. What was the best... Well, one, did you kiss the Blarney Stone?
No.
Why not? Did you not... Did you all not go there in Ireland?
We did not go there.
That's too bad. What was your favorite part in Ireland?
Um, I really liked seeing the Cliffs of Moor. Um, we went both, like, up on top, um, along, like, the path they have up there, and then we also went on a ferry ride down below, um, and got to see them from that angle, which was really cool.
Did you go to Connemara?
No.
Awesome. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Do you want to be called out of order, or do you wanna wait till Mr. Nugent, or are you?
I'd like to wait for Steve, if you could.
Okay. Yeah, we can. Absolutely. Yeah. All right, so let's move into recognitions.
Great. Usually I print them out so I can see them. I didn't do that tonight. Hold on. Uh, so first, we just would like to recognize the ABECC. They had a kindergarten information night, uh, this week. Uh, there's a list of the staff members that participated in that event, and you'll see some of our new parents. Um, it was really nice, Ms. Andover and I were able to go, and it's really nice to be able to be there and see new parents that are joining our community. This time of the year, we're always, like, trying to wrap up, and the hustle and bustle of the end of the year, but it was really wonderful to be able to see new parents who are excited to join North Andover Public Schools.
Where was it held?
It was held at the North Andover Middle School. Because ABECC takes all of our kindergarten students, there's not an opportunity to, um, hold all of those families in the ABECC. And then, we had some North Andover seniors who participated in the Mass dot pre-apprentice program. You'll see a couple of pictures of them there. This is a program that... Where the students learn about the career and highway construction industry, and how this applies to the five trade unions associated with this work. Uh, there's a list of the students that also... That were able to participate in this. We wanna recognize the North Andover High School Chorus and Band, the, um, and the chorus. Each of the three groups that were part of a competition won gold medals. Uh, the adjudicator award was, um, given to us for Best Overall Program, and the band, they finished second with a silver award, and Beth Lane won the Maestro Award. Very talented students. The MIAA released their first power rating this spring on Tuesday of this week. Um, this is the Athletic Association, and so some highlights for North Andover High School. The girls' lacrosse is the number-one ranked team in the Division One, woo-hoo! Boys' lacrosse is ranked number 13, girls' tennis is number 24, and boys' tennis is number 19. So we have some super talented students. Uh, the North Andover Middle School's Green Team, they are sixth grade... It was led by our sixth-grade science teacher, Erin Gordon. They had a crayon drive where they collected hundreds of crayons that are going to be melted down and turned into new crayons that they're going to give to the ABECC, and they're also gonna use for some of their own programs at, uh, North Andover Middle School. The Kittredge School, um, students, they're called the Raise-Ins, 'cause we participate in Raze, so they're the Raise-Ins. Uh, they had a cleanup day, uh, in honor of Earth Day at their school, so that's a picture of the students who participated in that cleanup. The ABCC had their school assembly. I... If you remember earlier in the year, I talked about they're, um, all about filling the bucket. It's based on a book, how you can fill somebody's bucket, so these are the students that were, um, awarded the Bucket Fillers of the Month, and they get their picture taken with Bob the Bulldog. Uh, we want to recognize CPAC, and I think they're here tonight, um, and they can share with us. CPAC donated, uh, medical sensory backpacks to all of our schools. Um, I might have... Great, they're gonna come up to talk a little bit about that, so... And they, um, also helped, um, us purchase outdoor communication boards for all of our schools. So I'm gonna ask them just to speak quickly about those two things.
Absolutely. So, these medical backpacks are from a nonprofit called Bit of Grace, and while they were created for children or people with disabilities, it truly is for everyone in our community. What's included inside of this backpack, and why we felt it was very crucial for our nurses to have them as a support resource, is that you have a laminated AAC on the go that is related to health, so that especially in times of high stress, and this goes for neurotypical or neurodivergent, right? We shut down, as adults, as young people, um, a whiteboard so that they can write down any of their concerns, if they can't verbally communicate it. Headphones to help a child have noise cancelling, especially for our ASD kiddos, where that sensory processing really kicks in during those high-pressure times. And a menagerie of different fidgets, poppers, different things that you can do to try to alleviate some of those things when you need to reset. Our goal for CPAC is to bring this to our first responders in the community. As we know, uh, people with disabilities, the elderly who may be, um, suffering from dementia and things, oftentimes have, so unfortunately, some traumatic experiences when it comes to first responders. Um, not to any fault of the first responder, but this is our way of also supporting them, and making sure that those within our community, the first stop is in our schools, so they see this, and they're like, "This isn't so scary." I've seen this in my nurse's office. But then, our first responders are able to get to the bottom of what is going on with our kids, our adults out in the community, those that maybe have traumatic brain injuries. I mean, this truly runs the gamut. And we felt with our nurses, this was a great grab-and-go as they accompany us on field trips and in the classroom. Um, that goes right back to the communication boards. The way it works with Flutie Foundation is, once a town has granted one, which you'll find ours at Drummond, you no longer eligible to get them through a grant. So, while our teachers have applied, we do need to come out of pocket to have them. So we also felt it was important that every school has this, again, for conversation, for our kids in our community, and also those that utilize this as a communication tool from the day-to-day. So we're really excited that we were able to make these come true for our community here, because this spans far behind, far past their time in our schools, and really is about the stakeholder as our community members.
It's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The picture, um, the right-hand side is the one, the communication board that's at the Thompson School. Um, and I did put it on the slide, but there were some great pictures of all the nurses receiving, um, the bags. It just... Thank you so much to CPAC for, um, supplying that to our schools and our community. Um, and then today is, uh, National School Principal Day on May 1st. It's a time that we appreciate, um, it's celebrated annually. We appreciate our principals and our assistant principals for the hard work, for their dedication, uh, for the things that they do in their school community, um, and in our... In our town. It's a way to show appreciation to them. So, uh, we just would like to take a minute to recognize our, uh, principals and assistant principals. So, at Franklin School is Mr. Clark, at the Thompson School is Mr. Christopher Raymond, those are our two principals, and Ms. Nicole Riedelski is the assistant principal that supports both Franklin and Thompson. Erin O'Laughlin is the principal at Atkinson School, Karen Murdock Leahy is the principal at Sargent School, and Ellen Peters is the assistant principal that supports both Atkinson and Sargent. Dr. Tiffany Goddard is our principal at ABECC, and Mr. Richard Cushing is our principal at Kittredge School. At North Andover Middle School, Mr. George Gonzals is our principal, Mr. Craig Murray is our assistant principal, and Ms. Caroline Beasley is our assistant principal. I had to do this... They had given me individual pictures as well, but I just love their joint picture. So at North Andover High School, our principal is Ms. Deborah Holman, and our assistant principals are Mr. Scott Young and Ms. Ellen Grantum, and we thank them all very much for their hard work and dedication to North Andover. And I think that's the end of recognition.
Okay. Mr. Nugent's here. All right, so we are going to, um, take an item out of order. It is under New Business, the Upper Turf Field Proposed Lighting Schedule. We have Mr. Landry and Mr. Nugent here to speak about it.
Man, you've been taking things out of order for us. Appreciate that. So Greg... I'm Greg Landry, I'm the Director of Personnel and Operations. This is Steve Nugent, Director of Athletics for the, um, School Department. And Steve, and some really wonderful town employees, some really great community members have been working for years on improving one of the fields over there at the high school area. So there's an exciting field project planned for student athletes, for community members, uh, major improvements are planned for the grass baseball field and the tennis courts, uh, which will significantly increase usage opportunities in all areas for baseball, softball players. Our softball players play elsewhere, we're gonna bring them back to the high school campus. Uh, track and field improvements will also be included there. There's a multi-use soccer and football area, uh, and tennis and pickleball will be improved. Uh, those surfaces aren't great right now, and that'll be, um, totally redone. There's lighting improvements in the Walsh Stadium area, and also on the upper turf field. Multiple meetings have gone into this, it's been approved by the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission, and we're ready to go, and hopefully it'll be approved at town meeting, uh, on the 13th. So we're here tonight, uh, to present just proposed guidelines for the use of lighting on the upper turf field within the Alex Farisi Track. So the proposal's contingent on the approval at town meeting for the installation of new lighting as part of this fields project. If approved, we're proposing that the lights be operational Monday through Friday until 9:00 PM during the spring season, which starts in March, March 15th or so, and also for the fall season, which runs through November 15th. We don't anticipate any regular weekend use, but we would request flexibility to come back to the committee for special event approvals. No plans for the lights to be used, uh, for games or events during the summer vacation period. And the proposed schedule would not affect the current lighting setup used at the Walsh Stadium. So, um, lastly, we're proposing an informal review, one year after the implementation, to assess how the lighting schedule is working, both for us student athletes and for the broader community and the surrounding neighbors. So tonight, um, we hope you can consider those guidelines for the lighting, if and when it happens, um, and maybe endorse it, and we'll... Take a look at it as we... As we get the usage going and, um, have the experiences up there, uh, past... Past dusk, yes, on the turf field there.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions?
Just a couple of questions. So this is fantastic, so thank you for doing this. Just to clarify, so this track is the one between the high school and the fire station?
Exactly.
I just spent an hour and a half this afternoon at a lovely track and field event, right? So I sat there for about an hour and a half in that breeze, so this is expanding that use and seeing the... The students and the... The engagement that happened on that field, knowing that with... With additional lighting, to be able to extend that into more time and bring more to the students is an amazing, you know, a... A great additional add in terms of what we can offer. So, this is fantastic. With the additional use... So we... It'll be lit longer, right? So people will be able to use it more. Do you anticipate a lot more usage of the track? Or do you... You know, who else do you think... 'Cause you're pushing it a little bit later, which is great, so people will be able to go longer. Do you think there'll be more activities?
Yeah, it's really more for the turf... Turf than the track. Steve, maybe you can speak to that a little bit?
Great question. I was up there as well, so...
I think I bought it too.
Organized chaos. Yes.
It was fantastic.
So I... I think the... The main goal, guys, right now is that that turf field is the most ready field to be, um, as opposed to building a brand-new field, uh, because we're at such a shortage. It's easier to add lights to a turf field. We're basically adding an additional two to three fields when you add a turf field with lights. Uh, mainly in the fall, our field hockey team right now, they start as early as they can get a team here at 5:00, 4:00 PM. The JV team plays right after them at 5:15, 5:30, but typically, all of their games that are home after October 1st are cut short, because we don't have lights up there. And, you know, we... We've tried moving them down below, but we've got six soccer teams and three football teams using that one turf area down below. So this would absolutely enhance our ability to have more activities, for sure. That's one of the specifics. In addition, our youth booster program paid a lot of money this past year renting facilities off-site, because, you know, parents get home at a certain hour, they... They can't access the field after a certain point. So I think that's another thing that, you know, just trying to keep our youngsters in town and save some money as well. But it is mainly for the turf, it's really not as much for the track?
Thank you.
What'd you think of the new surface up there, the track surface and the netting and all that other stuff?
It was absolutely fantastic, and I... It felt like there was a thousand kids up there, and it... Organize... I will put more on the organized than the chaos part. It's impressive what that group... The high school students that are up there running it, the adults that are up there, more students than adults, but the encouragement that you see with it... My daughter's in third grade, and she just ran track and field events, right, for the first time in her life, and the joy and satisfaction that she had driving home tonight, that... That's invaluable. So being able to expand and continue to offer those things, like, that's the good stuff. So, thank you.
Um, just clarifying question. Lights would only be at the upper turf. The baseball, softball, tennis are not getting lit, but they're just getting re... They're getting fixed.
Correct.
Because they're not in best-of-all condition.
Not at this time. I think that the goal would be down the road. It's just too cost. Um, it was a... The cost was really more the issue, but that would be the goal, to expand that down there eventually.
And because technology has gotten much better, I am going to assume that the lights are going to be well-focused and not have a lot of spillage over into backyards over butters and whatnot, to make them all happier than I imagine they might be with having lights on until 9:00 o'clock.
Yeah, I'll be honest, this whole, um, us trying to put restrictions on when we use the lights came from the neighbors. We really have tried to be neighborly, right, you know, right from the get, you know, Greg and I, we've met with all five of budding neighbors, really, to the track facility in the upper turf there. And, you know, among other things, this was one of the things that they requested, is just to get a clear idea as to when it was going to be used, and really, you know, my commitment, our commitment to them was to really just identify specifically, you know, we're not gonna be using it on the weekends. Yes, yeah, and someone could say, "All right, they bought a house next to a turf field," but the same... There were no lights there when they bought it, right? So, Joe, I think to your point, I think we're really just trying to clearly work with the neighbors to make sure that they understand, "We're not looking to go past 9:00, we're not looking on the weekends." Really, it's three months in the fall and probably two months in the spring. As we get later into the spring, we don't need the lights as late as possible.
Um, and just for clarity, uh, the field hockey uses it in the fall. Who else uses it in the fall, and which teams are using it in the springtime?
So, the... Typically, we would put our subvarsity boys' and girls' soccer teams up there as well. They played a lot of games at Brooks this year, because, uh, again, we didn't have the ability to put them down below, and the track was being resurfaced.
Would we have the ability to put them... To bring them back?
Yeah. Yeah, that would... That would help with that. So really, you know, anything in the fall would be really more the two soccer teams and, uh, field hockey. Football can't play up there, there's no goalposts. Uh, in the spring, it... We just had a girls' lacrosse game up there yesterday, the track teams were on the road. So, boys' and girls' lacrosse and track would really be the ones that we could put up there in the springtime. That's for the high school. We could also expand that to the youth programs and even access for adults who have adult, you know, membership and leagues, things like that.
Which I think is a good fringe benefit, like, it's... It's nice that adults have a place to go, but we don't want them... You don't necessarily want that happening while we have all the other stuff there with necessarily want that happening while we have all the other stuff there with practices and whatnot, but to have a time afterwards where you have space to go do those things is also great. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. So, this is a first read, so I guess it's just pending approval at town meeting and then we can have our meeting to vote.
Great. That sounds awesome.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Thank you, guys.
All right. We're going to jump back into item number four. Any roundtable reports? Any upcoming North Andover Public School or community events?
I would just encourage any parents that are interested to volunteer for the SOS Senior Night. I imagine there's links, I found one on Facebook, they're out there posted, but it's a great opportunity to volunteer and make sure that our seniors have a night that they deserve.
Especially the overnight shifts and the early morning shift.
Oh, yeah. I'm thinking I'm currently signed up, like, for 10 to 3:00. But there are ones for the day before, for setup, there's cleanup the next day, so you can kind of figure what works.
And there's donation opportunities too.
Yes.
Last year, I did, like, the 3:00 to 5:00 in the morning. Yeah. It was great. Also, good reminder from Mr. Rudy AM, we have, not community, town meeting coming up in just 11 days. It's an important part of our town culture and a different important event that I've run. All of our voters come out and participate. We're anticipating a large crowd, but the more that show up, the better. Because it's about what's best for our town.
You have a couple more, few more days to register, to vote.
Till Saturday.
You just need to be a registered voter. It's not a special town meeting registration, but just be a registered voter.
You can do that till Saturday. And even if you're not a voter, you're allowed to come and watch.
All right. Thank you. Okay.
Just also call attention to the North Andover Public Schools calendar that's on the North Andover Public School website. May is a very busy month for our schools. There's lots of concerts and school arts and academics nights, and the high school has many activities, some we heard of tonight, but that calendar is updated by all schools. I'd really encourage people to take a look at that. And then also, I just want to remind people that Ms. Koenig and I and the town manager and the chairs of the select board and the finance committee taped in on the warrant with our town moderator, and that's available through CAM, gives you some opportunities to hear about some of the things that will be coming up at town meeting.
Did I skip ahead? Nope, you're good. All right. Thank you very much. Community chat update, I believe we've had one, we had one since our last meeting. No?
We did.
No.
You and I.
Did we have a meeting sometime?
No.
Wow. That was a long time ago. Yes.
Yeah, it's been a while. Yes, you are correct.
We had a meeting, a community chat over at the library, I think it was right before vacation.
The middle school library, yep.
We had just one lone individual show up. We chatted for a while. It was lovely.
Yeah, and there is one more coming up. There's one on, next week, on the 8th.
And this will be the last one before town meeting, so we encourage anybody who'd like to come out and have a discussion prior to going into town meeting, to please do that. Mr. Hicks and myself will be present, and I believe we're going to hold it here at the senior center. All right. Let's go into around the district.
Okay, great. Before we start, it'll just, yep, pop that up, look at a couple of, just some fun pictures from our students from ABC and the elementary students. Our principals have been sharing some of the work that's happening in their schools, and these are some that was recently shared at one of our principal meetings, some of the ways that kids are working together. And it also, what these pictures highlight is some of the ways that our schools are using our district accommodation plan. And really, that plan is in place so that it should be seamless, so that you don't, if you were to look in this picture, I hope you just see kids that are happy and engaged in learning, but there's lots of things that are being provided for some of the students in those pictures or for the classroom that gives students some opportunities to have some accommodations that they may need. And all of these accommodations are for all students. The district accommodation plan is for every student in North Andover. One of our goals, as we move forward, is to continue to help our educators look at the accommodations listed in the plans, to be able to provide them for students, but also to start to help our students to see the accommodations that are in the plan so that they can start to self-advocate for themselves as they get older and knowing the things that should be provided for them within our school communities. So that's a few of those pictures. The other thing I wanted to just briefly say, I think that Cece talked about it, or maybe it was Harper, was the Anne Bradstreet Poetry Contest that happened. And this Saturday, the finalists and the folks that were winners will have an opportunity to meet at the town common and share their poems. But I just wanted to really recognize the great work that was done in our schools and by our school leaders and by our student council reps, really giving the word out. There are so many students in North Andover who either are finalists or are the actual winners who will have an opportunity to participate. And even some of our town employees participated in the adult category, so that's really great. All right. Moving on to the superintendent's board. We just have some updates for you tonight. The first two are about principal searches that we have. I'm not sure if I have said this publicly yet. I know I have sent letters to the community, but we did finish our high school principal search. Mr. Hicks sat on that committee for the school committee. It was a wonderful group. We had two students from North Andover High School that were part of the committee as well. The committee moved forward with a unanimous vote, unanimous? Unanimous, vote to recommend Deb Holman, who is the current interim principal to me, and I have appointed her in that position starting July 1st. We're really excited about that. And then also, just to give you an update, that the Franklin School principal search is underway. Ms. Cormier is the school committee member who is serving on that committee, and the committee has been reviewing the applications of candidates for that position, and we'll be meeting next week to finalize those candidates and to set our interview schedule. So we're right on track for the Franklin School principal search. Then, just a couple other things, and those have some slides that we're going to share with you tonight, is an update of where we are FY '25 in the budget, and then a couple of updates for the FY '26 updates that are a little bit new, that you have not heard yet. Okay. Oh, it's a little small, but, sorry. You, the school committee members, you do have this in your packet. This is the FY '25 budget. You'll see that we are holding steady where we said we were last time. You'll notice that the estimated budget surplus or deficit, we're at a deficit unfortunately, is around the $3 million mark. I have spoke to you about the $4 million mark, but that is, the reason it's $3 million is because we have already added in the $1 million reserve from the finance committee. And then you'll also see there the potential funding sources. Those are pending approval at school, at town meeting, and then we would end the year with a balance of zero. So we are right on track where we said we would be. You'll notice where the revised budget, it does say $63 million now because that $1 million has been added. Our budget was only $62 million. Okay? And then FY '26. You have seen this chart before. There are two things that I highlighted in yellow that I wanted to point out to you. Originally, this chart in the middle school had four world language teachers. It now shows three world language teachers, which have been cut. I'll explain that in a little bit. And then overall, so on the program and school impacts, I highlighted that Spanish will be offered in eighth grade for two trimesters. Originally, we had there that world cultures would be offered at the middle school with a sampling of Spanish, and that has changed now. I'll explain that a little bit more. The rest has stayed exactly the same. In terms of staffing, we filled our third position, our third director of curriculum position. So as you know, Carol Larkum is one director of curriculum. We appointed Joe Clark as director of curriculum, which is why we have a Franklin School opening. And Jaclyn Taylor has been appointed, Ms. Ando appointed her last week to the third position. Jaclyn Taylor has been a district-wide literacy coach, and she's now moving into that administrative position. We're thrilled. We have added an additional Spanish teacher at North Andover Middle School. That is why it went from four to three, so there is an additional Spanish teacher. There was an English Language Arts teacher who is our current instructional coach. She is being transferred to the district coaching position, the one that Jackie Taylor was holding. It wasn't reflected in the slide before, but we had reduced our librarian at the middle school to a half-time librarian. We have restored that position to a full-time librarian at North Andover Middle School. And when we added the Spanish teacher back to the middle school, that Spanish teacher came from one of the teachers that bumped up to the high school, so we were able to recall one Spanish teacher to North Andover High School. And the change that we made was that now the two Spanish teachers at North Andover Middle School will be teaching direct Spanish instruction to eighth graders. They will receive it two out of the three semesters. We have two elementary openings at the Thompson Elementary School in first and second grade. What we are planned to do, what we have done is we've reached out to the eight elementary teachers who were laid off. Those eight teachers have all, all will be given an opportunity to interview for those two positions if they so choose. And so their two positions will basically, it's not really recall, but two positions will come, two people will regain their job. So that's a staffing update, yes.
For those two positions, for those eight individuals, they're all non-professional status?
Correct.
So they don't go through the recall procedure?
Correct.
They go through a regular application procedure?
Yes, they go through.
Because those would be the rules we have to follow.
Those are the rules. They're all considered non-professional teaching status, which gets tricky because they are professional staff, but they do not have professional teaching status. You gain professional teaching status after you complete three full years of work within North Andover Public Schools. So we have eight of them, so all eight of them have an opportunity to interview for the position.
Just a clarifying question, if that's okay?
Sure.
With the additional Spanish teacher going back to the middle school, before it was going to be one trimester of Spanish culture, and now it's going to be two trimesters of Spanish language instruction?
Correct.
I wanted to emphasize that.
Yes. There's no, go ahead.
I have a question around, so, related to that. So, thank you. Fantastic. This is definitely something I think we all heard.
Absolutely.
So, the fact that you were able to look at this, get the feedback and make the change, I think it's fantastic. Thank you. A question on, within why two semesters, or two trimesters of Spanish language versus the full year?
We would need one more Spanish teacher in order to have a full year.
Okay. Thank you. So this was what we could, we were able to get feedback and do, and get the two trimesters.
And I appreciate you saying that. This is, this plan is because of the feedback that we received. I know it's not exactly what everyone wants, but we listened, we were able to make some changes because of the ways that some people accepted different positions. We were able to support the work that's doing. And again, I understand that it probably isn't what everyone exactly wanted, but we really appreciate hearing from people, and that is how we're making our changes moving forward. And then I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Ando to have her talk about the elementary transition.
Some really, I was going to, there are some with our Kittredge Transition Committee, so proud of this committee. It's run by Carol Larkum, our SPAM director, and Michelle O'Leary, our director of SEL. And it has 16 members with representation from all five elementary schools. So I think this speaks very much to the sense of community or the community that North Andover is. So people have all come together in order to make this transition as smooth as possible. The timeline in transition events, which is in your packet, were co-developed with the leadership team, so with the principals and the leadership team at central office. And the committee is going to, they start meeting tonight, their first meeting was today, and they have other planned, May 8th and May 15th to meet. They'll meet more if need be, with the idea that, to have a consistent and supportive experience for students moving from the Kittredge into Atkinson, Sargent and Franklin. And so you'll see here, it's a very well-thought-out plan of how to transition students and families from the Kittredge School into our other elementary schools. And so, and we have representatives from all elementary schools in order to ease that transition and make people feel part of their new communities as soon as possible. Student placements went out, so students who would normally be, or students who are attending grades one to four at Kittredge now, got their placements on April 18th. If that placement didn't necessarily work for a family, they were able to place a request with me. That forum will close tomorrow, and I will work on student placement decisions next week. Prior to, you see down at the bottom, the events that this team is planning, May 12th, the receiving schools are going to visit Kittredge. So representatives from Franklin, Sargent, Atkinson will visit the Kittredge School with a team. Principal, guidance counselor, teachers, you know, whoever is appropriate at the, for the schools are going to visit to get to know the kids at the Kittredge. And on May 22nd, there's going to be move over day to the new schools. So the students will actually be bused, oh, sorry, will be bused to their new schools to visit and get to know their communities there. And so, also, this team is planning June PTO meetings and summer meet and greet events to make the transition as smooth as possible for our students. So really proud of this committee, really proud of how the town come together in order to help support our kids.
Thank you for being so thoughtful. Just clarifying question, I think you said it, teachers, oh, teachers, wrong word, parents or families that might want to request a different placement can do that right now and email you, and will have that, they'll be, they'll know the status of that before visit day, before move over day, or just before Kittredge visit day?
Before May 12th.
Before May 12th?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for having such a tight, quick turnaround on that. That's impressive. Thank you.
Just a small clarification, it's not an email. You received an email that has a Google form. If you can fill out the Google form, that's
Thank you.
helpful because emails sometimes get lost. So just make sure you fill out the Google form.
No, I appreciate that. I used the wrong word and that could be confusing.
And then those families that made a request to me should get an email from me tomorrow saying, I'm going to do my best to do this for next week. But we wanted very much the students to participate in the May 12th visits, and so we will be, I think we'll be able to turn it around before then.
Have you gotten a lot of requests yet, or a few?
Less than 20.
Okay.
So just a question on the transition plan. This is fantastic, right? You stepped through, it looks like lots of feedback, looks like there was lots of different voices here. So fantastic, just a general question, because I know this was one of the big concerns from the, from the parents that we heard, the concern about their children transitioning from one school to the next. Have you been able to get, I know, I know you have parents on the committee, but has there been any other feedback too from any of the other parents? Is this, is this hitting the mark for them? Are you getting feedback one way or the other yet, or do you anticipate it, or?
I think tonight's their first meeting with the transition committee, but I think that what people appreciate, that there's a transition committee, everyone had opportunity. We really wanted to make sure until everybody was placed, there was, and I, the PTOs have been great, so we're really trying to continue to elicit feedback, and I would say, if it's not making the mark for someone, they should feel comfortable emailing either Ms. Larkum or Ms. O'Leary to make sure that we're accommodating the needs of what our families are looking for.
Thank you. Mrs., as you know, Mrs. O'Leary is our director of SEL, social emotional learning, and Kara is our, one of our directors, but also has a fifth grader at Kittredge, and both of her students, both of her kids have attended Kittredge, so there's a, she's part of that community in a different way as well. And so, they're taking good care of everybody, I hope. Awesome. Another thing that, another opportunity that has arisen is with our, with the difficulties that come with budget decisions, there's also some opportunities, and one of these opportunities is around the North Andover Middle School schedule. A few years ago, we were able to rework the high school schedule to have seven class periods a day, one that gets dropped. Am I saying that right? Thank you. Exactly. We worked the, we reworked the elementary school schedule last year, and so NAMS is, there's an opportunity here for us to rework the NAMS schedule. And so, and we are not alone in that. So the idea that, that there is a DESE-supported initiative, that there's a team of us going to Holy Cross tomorrow in order to attend, how to, organizing staff schedules and budgets in alignment with key priorities in student learning. So the DESE or the Department of Education noticed, or knew that so many communities were in the situation that we're in, that we're trying to align staffing and budgets, that they're offering, DESE-supported, meaning they pay for it, we don't, professional development for our school leaders. Exactly, yes, exactly. And so we're taking a team tomorrow. And so we're taking a team tomorrow. So really, really exciting. But what's been going on at NAMS is that we've been gathering survey data, preferences, ideas, questions, analyzing that data, those data for themes, and using the guiding question, what is age-appropriate for middle schoolers, and specifically for each grade level. Mr. Goncalves has this graphic about kids first, what is best for kids, what do we uniquely need to help students with at the middle school level, which may be the idea that like being connected to adults, having lots of different options for related arts, and so that it can explore, you know, what they might be interested in. But we're identifying constraints, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and next steps. And so, exciting stuff. We're the idea that the revamping team structure and class size, but as you can see there in the purple, we are able to preserve class size between 23 and 25 at the middle school, with the idea of giving kids some really interesting experiences, and putting, making some of our related arts teachers part of the academic team. Again, this is not finished. We are still working on this, and we're getting additional support from the DESE tomorrow. We just wanted you to know about it, and so keep you updated. But as we have updated the high school schedule, the elementary school schedule, we're working on the middle school schedule as well, in the middle, in the idea to best meet the needs of our students.
Question? I have a question. So when you brought this up, this looked familiar to me. Why, this is getting, and I'm just going to ask the question, what's controversial or issue concerning about this? This is one that's getting posted out on social media that there's concerns about. So I'm just, what's, what's the concern? What's the concerns on this one?
I think change is hard, and the idea that, and we are, I mean, we all know, as we sit here, we are reducing staffing, you know what I mean, in the idea.
Very hard.
And we're trying to make the best with the resources that we have, and I think change is difficult. I do think we're doing some, I do think we're putting some changes in place that will, that will be good for kids. And so, absolutely, but I understand it's different than the model we have now.
Okay, but looking at this, this is something that you're confident in, this is going to be good for our middle school students with what we, the structure we have.
Absolutely. I think, just to go back to what Ms. Ando said, that this was an opportunity for us to look at the schedule, and change is hard. And we're always, not everyone's always going to agree. And we may not have changed the schedule this quickly, this soon, if we weren't faced with making some, some budget cuts. But there really is a lot of opportunity here, and one of, and the team has been extremely thoughtful, though, looking at that, one, two, three, four, fifth block, and what makes sense depending on the developmental age of the student, either a sixth grader, seventh grader, or eighth grader, and then what the through line might look like. So in terms of if you're looking at digital literacy and some literacy activities in sixth grade, there is an opportunity for that to, there's a plan for what that might look like, starting in sixth grade, knowing what a project might look like in eighth grade, and bringing that all the way through. And we continue to give a North Endover Middle School teachers opportunity to share some of their concerns with us, to give feedback, and understanding that we will have to be making some changes. And I think one of the other pieces is, and you'll see it up top there, where it says how many classroom teachers that we had had, general education teachers, and then putting some of our, what once were considered related arts teachers into the team model. And maybe not everybody agrees with that.
Thank you.
When we're talking about schedule, in this case, we're talking mostly about organization of teams, are we also, so far. Are we also talking about length of classes, trimester schedule, things like, mostly it's based on person allocation and structures that way?
Correct.
Thank you.
What is library? That looks different.
So library is, as we have like library, library skills in the elementary school, we picture it in eighth grade as sort of a culminating eighth grade project at the end of the experience. And so it will be taught by our library media specialist, but it'll be a chance for students to spend extended time doing research or working on a project. We have an eighth grade civics project, so that would tie in very, very closely. And so this idea that, the team really thought very, very, we're very thoughtful about how to arrange things for students. So an eighth grader would have Spanish two semesters or two trimesters, and then have library, which would be a research project, possibly collaborating with their civics project during that time.
That's really cool. Another question I have, that's really cool.
Thank you.
I said, that is really cool. Because I can't really lie, like, I don't remember spending much time in the library in middle school. So I think that's actually a great opportunity to get kids to sit in that library and maybe look at those books. That's a good skill to learn. I'm just also wondering, is there any art classes? I don't see art on the schedule, so I'm just curious.
So we wouldn't have art, these are the, so the team structure and class sizes, we would have an additional eight teachers who would run the, during related arts. So that's where our music teachers would fit in, our art teacher, our, the rest of our physical education teachers would fit into that schedule. And so they wouldn't necessarily be on part of the team structure, but we would, the students would then rotate through their related arts.
So they would have seven classes a trimester?
So they would have, yes, so five of their core, and then two of their related arts.
Oh, okay, so these are the cores. Oh, wow, that library class is a core class? Oh, that, that's really cool. I can't lie, that's really cool.
So could I, I have a couple of questions. First of all, it's, it's very interesting and helpful to sort of see it up there. So thank you for sharing that. There are interesting differences, right? You would think that they're all the same, but some have 14 gen ed teachers, and some have 12, and some have three RA teachers, whatever that is, and some don't. I'm thinking that there's a very interesting story behind that, and I wonder if you'd be willing to tell it to us. I mean, it sounds, it looks like you're doing some differentiation, that you, you're going to think about which team, the teams are slightly different, which makes sense, because then you can do different things for different kids, but I'd like to hear more about
Of course. RA stands for related arts, which I would like to consider non-traditional academics, or the idea that, so we would consider our traditional academics or our core classes, English, math, science, social studies. In related arts, things like PE, wellness, literacy, digital literacy. And so the idea that in some cases, it made sense to put our related arts teachers on a team. And what would happen is like, so for instance, in sixth grade, the students would rotate through, one trimester they would have literacy, one trimester they would have wellness, and one trimester they'd have digital literacy every day, so that we could like, we could have extended projects we could do. And those, those are the things that made sense in sixth grade. For example, taking digital literacy in sixth grade, when you're just learning to be a citizen of the digital world, or you probably know before sixth grade, but the idea that like, at the beginning of your studies, you learn about digital literacy and research online, and accurate sources, and those sort of things. That seemed to make the most sense in the sixth grade year. AMS or STEAM, where AMS, Applied Math and Science, is something that has lived in seventh grade currently, and it is a, it is a applied math and science. STEAM is STEM with art involved as well. We haven't quite landed on what that course would look like, but it's the idea that we've always had a fifth block of applied math and science in seventh grade. So in order to preserve that, we had to make, you know, one of the teams look a little different and be a four-person team, with, with those teachers teaching their core subject and also social studies at the same time. That's why that middle column looks different, but it was to preserve that applied math and science course to an extent. And then eighth grade, you know, we wanted the students to have the Spanish experience as well, with this really cool, thank you, library experience as, as a culminating activity at the end of their year. So it's unique based on what we think is important for kids to have at different phases of their middle school life.
So one thing I wondered about in middle schools is, when children have special needs, when, when do they get that, whatever special instruction they need?
I think it depends on the student, I think it depends on the student, the situation, and the student's individual, individual plan. But they may get it during one of those core periods, or they may get additional
I'm sorry, one of those which periods?
One of these core periods, the ones that you see up here. They may have a teacher that pushes in to one of those core periods, or a TA that pushes into one of those core periods, and/or additional support during one of their related arts blocks. So a student would have these five blocks, and then two other additional blocks during the day.
So how many periods are there in a day?
Seven.
Okay, and so
This represents five of them.
It looks like each student gets five classes. Pretty good doing arithmetic in public. I don't usually do it.
Pretty dangerous.
That means that there are two periods when they don't have something.
No.
They have, they have the related art classes.
Good question. It's just not represented.
What I was about to ask, what happens in the other two periods?
It's the other related art classes, like music and chorus and acting and
Music, acting, chorus.
Gym, health.
Physical education.
Physical education, sorry.
Is it filled, or is there sometimes study time?
So we, the way, in this structure, and we're still working through it, we do anticipate that students will have one study period, one, sorry, one period each trimester. So it will, there will be a study period.
Is that a time that some students can get extra special instruction without missing anything else? There must be some artful juggling to make that work, but
So much artful juggling, yes. And it's, it's still a work in progress.
And how, how long is, did you change like how long the periods are? That didn't show, how long are they?
I think they are 55 minutes, but please don't quote me on that. I think they are 55. Is it 55? Is that right?
I won't quote you at all.
Thank you.
And how much time between?
A few minutes of passing time. I think it's three.
So it's a good time not to be in the halls.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Right, two minutes, thank you.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
Two minutes. You gotta go move quick.
The rooms are really close together.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did, I had one last, I'm sorry, I had one last question.
Don't be sorry. What else?
Can you go back to the graphic for a moment? The 77C, originally it was going to be two, but now it's a three-person team. I see social studies is, so we have teachers, and this is just an affirmation of how amazing some, how extra amazing some teachers are. We have an English, math, and science teacher and who all have the ability to also teach social studies?
Yes.
Wow. Awesome. That's great. Thank you.
And just to answer Ms. Cormier's question a little bit, I think one of the other reasons why there's some controversy or some negative comments is that the teachers don't know yet where they'll be placed. We did send a survey to all of our teachers, and we did ask them what their preference would be, which subject, based on their certification. So obviously, if they only have one certification, they only can choose one thing. But if they have more than one certification, we asked them to give us a preference as well as a grade level. And I understand that that, you know, we all, knowing something gives us all comfort, and helps us prepare for what that next piece might be. And it is hard to wait, and I can appreciate that. But as I think we all said, and as Mr. Moskowitz just said, we are trying to be very thoughtful and artful juggling, and we want to make sure that we're listening to our staff as much as we can, to place them where they want to be, and then making sure that this plan works and is the best plan for students, keeping kids, students first in mind.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to the chair updates, starting with the school committee Hall of Fame.
Thank you. It's one of my favorite parts of being vice chair. We have a few nominees. We'll be assembling the committee in the next couple of weeks. Our hope is to meet as committee and come with a first read, if any of the nominees make it forward. We will bring that, them forward at our May 22nd.
Twenty May, 29th.
Twenty ninth meeting, the end of May meeting.
And just to back up a little bit, this closed April 30.
Yes, the nominations closed yesterday. We have a few that have been nominated. At the end of May, we'll, we'll have a first read of a potential inductee, and a second read at the first meeting in June, so we can do it by the end of the year. Last year, Ms. Koenig, the chair, participated on the committee with me before she was chair. However, this year, I'm going to continue to chair that, and Ms. Cormier is going to join me as part of the Hall of Fame Committee. And we also have representatives from teachers and the union, and Mr. Landry will be participating as well. And then the Hall of Fame ceremony is part of the teacher celebration night in October, and then they also give the convocation opening remarks at the big meeting on the first day of teacher's school in August. It will be wonderful.
Thank you. It's always an exciting time to see
Yes.
all the wonderful educators that have come from North Endover. Okay, we're going to move on. Budget discussion, this is something we briefly touched on last meeting, where we just kind of wanted to do an overview of how the budget discussion works at town meeting, what we can expect, and how that moves forward. I asked Mr. Hicks to speak with the town moderator to make sure we had a clear understanding of that, and he has some feedback for us.
So I just wanted to share what the general process will be, so we have our understanding of what that moment will look like. Of course, during town meeting, there's going to be lots of things, and at some point, we're going to come to the part where we talk about the warrant article related to the town budget. It's an omnibus budget, as in it's the entire town budget, part of which will be our school budget included in there. When we get to that point, roughly 130-ish million, I don't have the exact number, $30-ish million, $68.2 right now, recommended by ThingCom for the schools. When we get to that point, the finance director of the town and the finance committee chair are going to review just some of the facts of what the municipality can and can't do, what the rules are that we have to follow, how we get to the budget, and all those different procedural things, so that everybody understands that part of the process. Then we're going to have, as typical, typically happens, the town manager and the superintendent will give their presentation about the proposed budgets. There'll be the main motion and the number, roughly the $130 million mark, $68.2 for the schools, that will then be put on the table. The moderator then anticipates that there'll be time for questions. After questions, there'll be time, some point after that, for discussion among town meeting, questions from town meeting, the group of people there, discussion from town meeting. And during discussion, there is an opportunity for, during any discussion, for any warrant article, for citizens and people to make amendments. The amendments could increase the number of 130-plus or the $68.2 million. It could decrease. We don't know what's going to happen, but that is something that could be proposed by members of town meeting. If that happens, we then vote either in favor or against those amendments. They might happen, they might fail, we don't know. That's part of the democratic process. But eventually, after we go through that process, we will end up voting on a budget number. That is the general procedure that will be filed at town meeting at some point in the evening. I'm guessing not the very beginning, but not at the very end.
From what I understand, Ms., the town moderator is going to do his best to make it as early as he can.
In the beginning-ish.
In the beginning-ish. We do want a lot of parents present. I think that's important, and we want to make sure that they have coverage for childcare if need be, so that they can be there in our outlet.
And town meeting starts at 6:30?
6:30.
And we do have a meeting beforehand, but like, I don't, I don't think it'll be the first thing we do, but it will certainly be towards the, among the sooner things that happen at town meeting.
Well, the moderator told me that his plan is to try to finish it by 9:00 p.m. So I, I want to ask
Finish the whole meeting, not that one.
No, 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 no. No such luck. And school committee members would be embarrassed if they left at 9:00 p.m.
Oh, but in terms of 9:00 p.m., there, there is going to be babysitting there, but it's also a good idea for other individuals to offer up babysitting services for neighborhoods and people so that we can
You do have to register on community programs.
For childcare.
I'm not sure how long that is.
Could you, just so people know, announce specifically, where do people who want babysitting, what do they do?
So you have to go to the community programs. You have to log in, there's a link to register.
Go, you mean on a computer?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. I'm not sure when you have to register by. I think there is a deadline.
But it's pretty soon.
But it is free. There's no cost to it. And I believe it's kindergarten up. I was going to say kindergarten up, yeah, it's not littles. Yeah, it's kindergarten and up. And it does end, so maybe, yeah, if we can find, I'm looking to see if I can find the details on it, because it does end at one point, so if the meeting goes extremely late.
The goal is to make sure we do this before
Yeah.
And when you say go register, you mean, of course, through the NAPS Public Schools website, to the
Community programs.
Community programs website.
Community programs website, part of youth services, then?
Yes.
No.
Well, it's on, no. It's on the, if you go to North Endover Public School website, you go to, is it under quick links?
It is, parents in the district will know where community programs, anyone who does
It's the school's website, right?
It's there. It's anyone who does any of the after-school programs, or the Kid Stop, or Breakfast Club, it's the same, or it's the same
I know I did through that.
You can get to it through the NAPS website.
I had to log in and then register. Click here to register. I just registered for Kid Stop. And then I think it's under enrichment.
So in case, so you just did it, Kelly?
No, I, I just registered for something else for community programs today, so I'm just trying to find where I hit the link. It's somewhere in there amongst the list of programs. Town meeting, childcare. There we go. Okay, and when, does it have a deadline on there?
May 10th.
May 10th? Okay, May 10th is the deadline. So if you haven't registered with community programs, you still have time to do that through community programs. Okay, good to know.
So one other thing I wanted to say is that One other thing I wanted to say is that the town meeting can appropriate any amount of money it wants. But the Department of Revenue will only certify a tax rate if the amount is consistent with the budget levy. So it is within the power of town meeting to vote an appropriation in excess of what's available, but it's not in the power of town meeting to have such a budget actually instituted. So that's what happened in Andover last year, is that they passed a budget in excess of what's allowable, and they couldn't set a tax rate, so they had to start all over again.
Right.
So what happens if that happens to us?
Start all over again.
But what, what does that mean in practicality?
Well, the, the Department of Revenue says, "We will not certify the tax rate."
Yeah, I think she wants like.
So then the town has to vote again. You have to have another town meeting.
So I'm just talking, so what does that happen to our budget? So then, what do we, do we revert back to, because there's lots of, what, what happens in terms, because I'm thinking, school budget, right? Like, that's what we care about. We need 68.2 million dollars. That's what we need. So how do we get, I just am trying to think, what are the things that could happen at town meeting that keeps us from not having exactly 68.2 million dollars in our hands?
Well, one would be a successful amendment to reduce the amount of our budget.
Yeah.
Another would be that for any, whether it's our budget or anything else, to have the total exceed the levy limit, at which point, there has to be another town meeting, and you start all over again.
So we'd all have to come back together and, basically as Mr. Moskovich said, start over again in terms of what the allotment would be if the, for each of the departments in order to.
So we wouldn't have a budget, though. What would, because we would leave town, so if a budget doesn't get voted for, or it gets voted in some way, it gets voted, we pass something that is outside the amount of our levy, so we know in reality the Department of Revenue is going to say no, so we would walk away without a budget for next year, the town wouldn't have a budget for the next year. So I'm just, I think, what does that mean for us, is, you know, just being very selfish, as the schools, we'd have to come back together again. No, we don't have a budget. We wouldn't have a plan. I mean, do we start, do we assume we're going to next year with our same budget and more cuts? Like, what would we have to do? Are we not even going there?
I think I know the answer to that, but I believe what happens is the, you have to operate under the existing year's budget until a new one is.
That's, that's only if it ends up being at the point where it's the new fiscal year started.
Right.
Right, correct.
So if we have a special town meeting before the new fiscal year.
I think in practice, what would happen is we'd have to convene another town meeting before, before July 1st.
One thing to keep in mind, though, too, we, in order to give us all the money that we want, the 68.2 million that we need for next year, my understanding is the town no longer has a special town meeting budget, where they took that out. I believe they took that out. So that means that money's gonna have to come from somewhere else, so we'd have to do another town meeting. And, and just in thinking about, like, amount of time, because if, if, if this is what happens, if we leave without a budget, it means we've got a lot more work to do. Right? So I'm assuming we, we're not gonna come back in a town meeting in two weeks, right? I mean, we're, we have more work to do to come up with something, so that's gonna take time, right? And we're gonna have to do another town, I, I, special town meeting, I don't think I've had one since I've been here, but is that like a six to eight week? Is that a two-month thing? So then we'd be looking into, but that means for next year, we'd have to start thinking about, do we, do we have to do more cuts? Like, what, I'm just.
So a, a couple of things. One, we, town meeting won't necessarily end until it's adjourned. It can stay open, and if it doesn't get done by 11 o'clock that night, it goes to the next day. So we can, town meeting continues, and this happened many years ago. It happened for three or four days, and attendance was dwindling, 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 but eventually they did pass the budget. So I have confidence that at some point, we will pass a budget.
Okay.
A special town meeting in the, yes, you could, if the budget isn't more than what the levy is, that could necessitate an override, let's say, because that would be a way to resolve that. There are things that would have to happen in terms of select board being, doing that, and calling that, for that to happen at a special town meeting and then a ballot afterwards. There are other things I think they have at their power that I'm not completely sure what they are, to avoid the "we have no budget come July 1st" scenario. Like, there are other steps that can be taken. I don't know exactly what they are. I, I get sometimes confused, but there are things that we could do. Personally, I think the best thing, the best outcome would be, and I'm hoping for, is that we are able to come to a resolution that is a budget that gives us what we need, that town meeting votes on, that maybe we are all not very happy with, because that's sometimes what happens, is compromise, but we're all not as angry as we could be, and we can move forward and, and move into the next fiscal year.
So there's one part we should emphasize, which is if the budget exceeds the levy limit, the select board may, or may not, up to, it's up to its discretion whether to call an override election.
They don't have to.
That's right. They don't have to. So if they, if they call it and it passes, then there's no problem. Actually, I think if you call it and it doesn't pass, well, no, then you don't know.
Then you back a square one.
I'm not quite sure what happens.
It would depend on how the motions and the things are written and whatnot, and that's stuff that we don't necessarily have answers for.
The motion could be written that it's conditional upon passing of an override, and then you wouldn't need another town meeting if it failed.
And we also want to keep in mind that should we, should there be a vote to use all the levy limit or to exceed it, this is also going to affect our FY '27 and being able to have money for Kittredge that we had planned to use.
It would greatly jeopardize our ability to build another school.
I think we, we've heard a lot about how people are unhappy and angry with us not having the ability to do what we had defined as level services, and there's a large enough contingent there that will be advocating for that. I think there will also be a sizable contingent advocating for us to go back to the, to a lower number. I think there are people who also don't want 68.2, that that's too much, and they don't wanna be paying the extra taxes regardless. And I think there is a good opportunity to someplace, to end up someplace in the middle. So as much as like we, you might be afraid of us being over and having, and not knowing what to do, I think there's, in town meeting, there's some safeguards to keep us from going too high, as well as I think there's some safeguards in the composition of town meeting to keep us from going too low. I think both are there. I think there's enough diversity of opinion that we will end up at a place where we have a thing that allows us to move forward. I don't know what that thing is. I don't know how we get there. I think it's gonna be an event for us to all watch and be part of, but I think there is enough voice that we are not going to end up in either of the, I hope. I'm hoping, this is me speaking. We don't end up in either of the extreme versions, but someplace in the middle.
Can I just underscore something the chair said, which is that although there's nothing exactly in writing, I think there's a sort of informal understanding that we left $1.9 million of excess levy limit, and most of us voted for a budget a little bit less than we were hoping for, precisely because had we not done so, we'd have been in a position a year from now of not being able to cover the teacher contract, the increases in the teacher contract, and we did that so that we're not, you know, having to have an override vote another, twice in a row.
Or additional layoffs.
Yeah, we needed to leave room to meet the existing obligations, right? That was the bottom line. So I think, though, one thing I, I wanna add, that we do have to be prepared for the, for the fact that Joe just pointed out, that an amendment could pass that lowers our 68.2, right? So that's unfortunate and I hope it doesn't happen, but, but that is a possibility, right? Somebody could attack that.
A friend of mine who comes to this very room once a week assured me that it is full of people who are going to vote for that very amendment. So people who are worried about the schools should try to be there, as Ms. Cormier said, to vote for our 68.2 million dollars.
And all we can hope is that as many people come out, so that we have a representation of the majority of the community who can speak for what a majority of the community would like to see happen, and that, that needs numbers. That needs people.
I, I think at the, end of the day, the important thing for us to acknowledge is, like, we've gone through the process, and Ms. Lathrop and her team have done an amazing job of giving us the budget and all the details that go along with it, and we've approved it, and it's gone on to select board and FINGCOM, and they're gonna recommend the thing, and it's the responsibility of town meeting to make that decision. Like, we get to recommend and vote favorable action, but town meeting, we are, we are one of the probably 2,500 people, maybe 3,000 people there, to make the choice. And I want as many people in that room to make the choice, so that when we, whatever happens next year, in terms of what schools look like, it is our decision that we all collectively have made.
And I think it's just that message, that the best way to support our schools is for people to vote for the 68, for the town budget, as in the warrant, that has the 68.2 million for our students. That's not just the right thing for this year. It's the right thing for next year, as we think through. We're not, we're not looking at just the next year. We're looking at what's gonna be best for our kids year over year.
So tell everybody you know to come vote.
Can I just add one other thing? People have asked, understandably, I think, they're a little puzzled about how it is that we're asking for a 10% increase in our budget for this, over the current year, and still making a lot of cuts. It's, it's a reasonable question, and the answer is, and I think maybe it's easy for people who, I mean, we all follow this all the time, and we kind of understand it. It would be tempting to think, well, you know, something happened last year, and the schools spent so much, and the town helped out, and now it's all over. And what I don't think people understand is that it, the, the knowledge that we were spending something like $6 million over our budget, no, this, we were not aware of this until about this time, and it was not only too late to cut last year's budget, but it was too late to rethink staffing for the current year. That is, the extra spending last year was not on books. It wasn't one-time money. It was on things that continue. And I think it's important people understand that for two years in a row, we've been spending five or six million dollars a year more than our appropriation, and I think everybody understands we can't do that forever, and at this town meeting, we need to decide either we need to increase taxes a lot so we can keep spending at our current level, or we need to cut spending so we can keep taxing at our current level, or, as we and the other boards recommend, we can kind of split the difference.
Thank you. All right, so let's move on. Our school building committee updates, starting with North Andover Middle School.
They are currently working on punch list items. We don't have another meeting scheduled at this time, but there will be one final meeting after the punch list items are finished to end.
Be done.
To be done.
To be done. All right, thank you.
That's where we're at.
Kittredge Elementary. What do we have?
I will talk about that in a minute, but were we gonna look at this?
We did.
We did. Okay. Was that earlier, or is that, oh, okay. Very good.
Did he ask permission to bring it back?
No, no, no.
Or is that out of bounds?
I, I don't think I need to. I just wanted to know if we would, if we had, I'll watch, I'll watch what I miss when, later. So at Kittredge, we formally approved the, the recommendation for the new construct, for the, the version of the new building. And as far as I know, that's really the, the big, the big news.
EFR has been submitted. The preferred schematic report has been submitted.
Submitted, yes.
And we are just waiting. We will either have the date of May 14th or May, May 21st, when we'll have an opportunity to meet with MSBA and answer some of their questions about that, but we are moving along.
So they, at one point, if I understand the history right, David's committee, or its predecessor, went to the school building authority and said, "We have three buildings that need work. Which one do you find most appealing as something you'd like to help us with?" And they said Kittredge, which is why we picked it, but they didn't actually, I guess this is the question, they didn't actually promise to do it. They just said it was the one.
Correct. They, they said, "You, you have three candidates. This is the one we recommend you, you ask us for help with."
And when?
That's actually what, really what happens.
No, well, right. So now we've given them a formal request.
Yes, well, we're actually in, deep into a process of formal requests. There's, there's several gates that you have to go through. We've been through the first two now. The second one is the schematic review, which is what is about to take place.
Correct. We have, all that document is completed. We have formally submitted it.
Right, there's like a 600-page.
Lose my words at this point.
It's a 600-page paper, which outlines.
Which you've memorized, of course.
Oh, of course. But within that is all of the work that's been done to now, including every option that was put forward, evaluations of those options, comments from the community, comments from the building committee, our building committee, et cetera. So the formal, so we had voted to approve it a month ago, and then we met again to formally move it forward, right? In other words, there was a time period where individual committee members could comment, and the final vote was two weeks, two weeks ago, I think. And so now is going to be submitted at a meeting of the Mass State Building Committee, which is May.
May 14th or May 21st. We're waiting for our date.
I'm waiting for our date.
And when?
And the, the architect and the owner, project manager go to that meeting and present our.
Myself, the town manager.
Are you doing as well?
And when will they give us a decision?
Is that June?
It's a, is it a month?
I think so. I think that's the June date that we're looking for. In front of me, sorry.
I might, actually, but it's, I believe it is almost certainly in June. Let's see if I can find it.
And this is superintendent, this is also that we can, next year, then ask town meeting for the debt exclusion to fund.
Correct. Once we get through this, then, just as we heard earlier tonight, working together with the community to move forward for the debt exclusion.
With a 40-ish percent reimbursement rate.
Yes.
Which then requires approval by the town, the voters of the town.
Yeah, the, the voters of town, at town meeting 2026 need to approve the debt exclusion so that we can borrow the money, that, to fund our part. MSBC funds, funds their part, which is 40-ish percent, 40, 45%, and the town has to fund the other 55%.
But there are two, the town has to make two decisions. The town meeting has to authorize the borrowing, which is a two-thirds vote. But the voters need to authorize the debt exclusion because that money is above the levy limit. The, the funds within the levy limit. It has to go to a vote of the people unless you have the money within your levy limit.
Correct. It wasn't originally.
But we won't, because we're gonna use it.
Because we're using the money from the levy this year for the 68.2. That's why we have to go forward with a debt exclusion.
Yes.
So we're both right. You're right, it has to happen at town meeting, and I'm right, that it has to be voted of the people.
Okay, let's, let's go on, because we do have our CPAC here as part of our Advisory Committee for Special Education, which the school committee had formed a while, several months ago. So this is our, our first report from them, based on what we had requested in the guidelines.
Hi, good evening. How are you?
It's early.
It's lovely, thank you.
It's better than being 20 minutes late.
My name is Sasha Weinrich. As many of you know, I serve as the president of the North Andover CPAC, also joined by Lauren Stedman, who you heard earlier, who is, serves as our vice president of CPAC. I want to give her a shout-out before we start. She was instrumental in really working with the organization, Bit of Grace, to coordinate those bags. We all did support that initiative, but she really drove, drove it home, and we're incredibly grateful for her advocacy, as well as with the AAC boards. So just wanted to give her that shout-out before we start.
Can, can Ms. Stedman join you up here as a member of the, she's on the ASE committee as well?
Of course she can.
I wasn't asking you permission. I was actually asking her to walk up.
My president is just so with it that I, I sit back and.
So as you may remember, and just for a refresher for people who may be watching at home, some time ago, the CPAC advocated to the school committee to engage a third party to do a special education review of our district. So we were fortunate enough to use some ARPA funds to fund that initiative. This allowed the district to hire Urban Collaborative, which is a third party out of Arizona State University, to review how special education is working in our district. Based on that report and presentation, the school committee took that and formed the Advisory Committee on Special Education, of which Lauren and I and our colleague on CPAC, Zora Warren, sit on that advisory committee, as well as Joe Hicks and Ed Moskovich from the school committee. Well, I didn't, well, there's other, that was the school committee members, and I'll get, I'll get to the rest. So as well as our assistant superintendent Kristen Ando, and our interim executive director of special education, Lynn O'Neil, and we're fortunate to have all of their input and feedback, and I'll get to kind of the, the makeup of the committee as well. So let's, I think, start with kind of a review of what, what was our task? So let's, I think, start with kind of a review of what, what was our task? What were we, what was our assignment from the school committee? So the first thing was to review the Urban Collaborative's presentation. So as I said, it was very thorough. We have done that, and we'll talk a little bit about what we have achieved, and what we are working on, and where we are. The second piece was kind of reviewing the district's current approach and strategies to special education. So how is North Andover approaching special education today? Then, based on that, they had some suggestions for strategies and some, some recommendations for improvements to special education. Some of these things included, and some of the things that they looked at, were services and service delivery, access to general education curriculum. So we know, and something that we've talked a lot about at ACE, is the intersection between general education and special education, and you can't think about one without the other. The relationship between special education and general education, IEP development, our programs, our policies, professional development, as well as staffing, operational structures, and kind of the financial feasibility and timing of these recommendations. So we talk a lot about budgets, what are we doing today, where do we want to go, and then how do we pay for it? I think that's a really, really critical piece. So our goal is that we will work through this process, and kind of all of the information we have, in order to provide recommendations to the school committee for consideration. Again, just to be clear, this is an advisory body, we don't have decision-making authority, and that is not our role or our job. We are working collaboratively on behalf of our students with disabilities and their families, with the district and other stakeholders, in order to find a path forward, to improve the great things that are already happening today. So what is our project plan? So we've had, and I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, over five, less than ten, I think, meetings of, of the committee so far. And we have worked, one of the wonderful things about this makeup, and I'm grateful that the school committee gave some flexibility in that, is we've started with, you know, a smaller group of folks, to really understand, how do we move forward, what's the right way? It's really challenging to do that in a group of twenty people, right, or however many people. So starting with a smaller group to establish this project plan has been, has been great. So the first step was to review Urban Collaborative's presentation as a group. We have done that. The second step was kind of figuring out what this project plan overview looked like. So we've, we've kind of separated it into, I would, maybe buckets isn't the right word, but buckets. So a review of our current special education approach, strategies and recommendations, a review of our current general education approach, strategies and recommendations. I think there are a lot of great things already happening in this district, that Ms. Ando and Ms. O'Neil are already doing, and their staff is doing, and it's wonderful. And they're already incorporating some of the recommendations from Urban Collaborative into their work. So we, as a committee, need to understand what's already happening. So we have this report, there may be things that are already happening today. The integration between special and general education, evaluating financial feasibility and timing, and also making sure that we have community member contributions and perspectives. We can't work in a silo, we need to know how the community is feeling about special education, about their, perhaps their children on IEPs or 504s in the general education classroom, and just kind of the intersection of these things, as well as all of our other stakeholders, teachers, OTs, BCBA's, TAs, you know, significant amount of people. So what have we done so far? We have reviewed, like I said, the Urban Collaborative's report. What is in process today is we have kind of split into two groups, and one is more focused on special education, and one on general education. And each of those groups has created a more in-depth outline of the specific exploratory topics that they want to review. So what is really important? So taking kind of those recommendations that were broad, and drilling down into them, separating between special and general education, saying what things do we really need to look at, and then touch on, to, to cover kind of the full scope of, of what we've been tasked with. And then what's really important is, based on that information, what data and metrics do we need? What is required in order to measure success or progress in those different areas? What can we look at, and how can we be data-driven in, in what we're looking at? And then also, you know, kind of this next step is, what are proposed participants? Who do we need to engage in order to get a full picture of what's happening in the district in these specific areas? And I think that is what we're currently working on, and very soon, we have our next meeting on Monday, and we'll take some of that information and establish kind of those next steps. So, next steps is on the slide. Review the topic outlines with kind of this initial group of advisory committee participants. Then we'll engage those additional participants based on need, right? So there may be that we only need some information that relates to a position for one particular topic, and their scope would be dedicated to that one particular topic, and they may not need to be involved for a year, and, you know, or however long. But we definitely want to engage those, those folks. We also want to allow for the subgroups to perform investigatory work, and we want to establish a formal timeline. We didn't feel like it was appropriate right now to have, to present you with a formal timeline, because I don't know, I think there's too much work to be done before we can get there, so we did not include that in this presentation. That was very high level, any questions?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
So, so the, the two subgroups you're talking about are subgroups within the existing small group?
Absolutely.
So they're really small groups?
They are.
Okay. But they're from the people you've already, that are-
Yeah, so just to be really clear, so obviously, our interim executive director of special education is in the special education subgroup, right? And then we have, you know, other participants kind of working on that. And then we have, Ms. Ando is focusing on gen ed, because she is the subject expert in understanding what we're doing today. And based on kind of building out those topics, it also allows for really good discussion when we get together, to say, where is there intersection? Or, hey, I'm looking at this, have you thought about this? And then we can build out kind of those more specific topics, take that and say, okay, based on those topics, what data do we need to look at? And, and put that down on paper, and then who do we need to talk to? And that way, we can kind of get a better grasp on all of those things, and establish a timeline to, to perform that, that work that needs to be done, present that to you kind of in our, in our updates, and also work with the stakeholders that we need to work with.
And one other thing I'd like to mention, that some of you may not know, is that the Federation of Children for Special Needs, FCSN, has recently created something called the Apple Institute, and that is to foster relationships between CPACs and their administration, their educators. So pat on our backs, that we are ahead of this game, and we have already instituted this on a much larger level, where we're drilling down on much bigger topics as well. But just to kind of give you that, yes, this is something that as a state, with CPACs, this is a larger conversation, and, and parents who may be home watching this, who have reached out to me, asking if we're going to be involved in Apple, we're, we're doing it, and we're doing it on a much larger scale, where we actually get to bring in you as a community at home, as parents, into the conversation, where Apple doesn't really bring that to the forefront yet. So I think that that's also something for people at home to know, is that we're doing it, and we're doing it on a much bigger level, and it's something to be proud of as a district, that we're leading that forefront.
So I had more, that's okay? So what I recall from the Urban Collaborative Report, right, the thing that really screamed to me was that, that we need to rethink general ed, and, as opposed to just focus on special ed. So I'm, I'm going to guess that that's a big part of what you're looking at here, but I guess my question is, when you guys reviewed the, I know you're not ready to summarize it for us, but when you reviewed it, was there any one big thing that jumped at you, that one or something else?
Yeah, I mean, there are several things, but I, and I, I think, you know, multi-tiered system of supports was the big one, right? That's, that's the headline. So yes, I think we're, we're well aware of that, and that's why I think Ms. Ando's work, and the things that she's doing, is critical, to have her involved, so that we can, we can kind of get all stakeholders on the same page and work together, where, you know, the focus, and I think if you recall, Urban Collaborative's report, and the woman who presented, forgive me, because her name is escaping me, and she was lovely, you know, her belief is full inclusion and stop, right? And perhaps North Andover isn't, is not, that is not our ultimate goal. Inclusion is incredibly important, but what I mean is, we still have, have programs in our district, that not every student is a full inclusion student. And so, you know, I think it's really important to look at that, and to say, what does inclusion in North Andover Public Schools look like? If, is that, is, you know, how can we allow children to be in a general education setting, and also receive a free and appropriate public education? That is the least restrictive environment, and it's, you know, our children should be included. And we, you know, I think, like Superintendent Lethrop said, we're already working on some of those things, just as a matter of practice. The fact that we have a revised D cap in this district, and teachers that are, general education classroom teachers, that are being trained in professional development, about what that looks like, and how to make it seamless, so that a young child doesn't know that a wobble chair is an accommodation, is a pretty wonderful thing. And that's not happening everywhere, and I think we are very cognizant of that. And also, frankly, I think this district has come leaps and bounds under this, you know, under the leadership, and I think the new school committee really supporting CPAC, and also working collaboratively with us. And we are really grateful for that, and look forward to, to that continued collaboration, because what it's doing is, it's allowing some of those things to come to the forefront, and, and for people to do really good work. And I think this is, this will continue to, to, I think, folks in general education settings will see that as well.
Okay, thank you. Just to echo some of Ms. Stedman's remarks in terms of collaboration, I think it was back in October of twenty-two, maybe, November of twenty-two, so we're talking like many years ago now, that we, we started on this journey by trying to have a program review happen. And at that time, I advocated for there to be a special, to be a subcommittee to do that work, and I was defeated in that motion. But one of the things I remember saying in the, in that speech that I gave was, we have the opportunity here, some of the arguments against it was like, that's not how things are done usually, here or elsewhere. And I said, point-blankly, like, we have the opportunity here to change that, and to, to do it first, and do it well, and to, to be the leader in reshaping how we think about working with stakeholders and groups that we, we are required to have, but we should not just have, work with them because we're required, but we should embrace them, because they're incredible, incredibly important asset to our, to our community. So I, so I thank you for engaging in the process now for almost three, for two and a half years, and continuing to do that work alongside us. I really do appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I think too, Joe, to go off of that, and kind of where this journey has taken us, when we're looking at the profiles that are within these categories of gen ed and special ed, we're also looking at specific age group, like eighteen to twenty-two, or post-transition, and those are conversations that we're, we're wanting to have, so that these people stay as community members, right, throughout their lifetime, so that just because they graduate from North Andover Public Schools, they don't get lost out there and feel isolated. So I think that that's also something to recognize, is that this is something, yes, for our pre-K families, and those that are within our public school walls, but it goes, you know, far beyond that, as far as what we have as a mission as an ACE, because again, this is something that talks about them as community members, and not as profiles within the school.
Just one, so thank you very much for doing this, and to kind of echo, Joe, you kind of gave the timeline, it's years in the making. Thank you. What can we do, what do, what do you need from us, that you're here presenting this, kind of a quarterly check-in, and this got, we have two school committee members on the, on your, on your advisory committee, anything you need from us as a body right now?
We're making a list earlier, we're sitting back there to be frank, as likely. So this is really an ACE Advisory Committee and Special Education update. So I think for the advisory committee and special education, I think that we have a lot of work to do, and we're really excited about it. And so the support for this committee in particular has been great, and we're, you know, we're lucky to have, I think, an administration who, who is not just willing, but, but eager to collaborate, and that has changed the dynamic, I think, here. So, so I think the committee is, is going to be very successful, and really looking forward to it. If we want to talk separate and distinctly about North Andover CPAC, we, we are very grateful for your continued, continued support. I think that there's a lot, frankly, that we need support with. I think we've been working with some stakeholders in the community, and, and most recently, talking to Superintendent Lethrop, about receiving support for an online platform in order to receive donations. So we are well aware that there are budget constraints in this community. We are also, you know, understand that fundraising may be needed on our part, and we are able and willing to do that. And so having kind of more of an administrative and technological support is incredibly helpful, and we're, we're very grateful that Superintendent Lethrop has, we've recently discussed that, and we're working on a path forward for that, and we, we greatly appreciate that. I do think that also working towards kind of a CPAC line item, within, within the special education budget, we also have been discussing, is incredibly helpful. I think that the interim executive director of special education, Lynn O'Neil, has been a great partner for us, very open to, how can we engage families and better educate them on what their rights are as, as parents? That was not necessarily the feedback previously, that's been, I think, a tremendous help for our families. We've also recently had kind of Q and A sessions for families, where they can come virtually and talk off the record, and ask questions in an environment that feels less threatening, and, and they can speak freely without that concern. That's been, I think, very helpful for our families. And, and I really do think that kind of the outcome of ACE will, will also be a significant support for CPAC families. Is there anything else that, I mean, yes?
Well, no, I just think, like, you know, your community chats and such, when you're encountering, you know, encountering so many community members that we may not, or may not know about us, that are also allies, who may not have a child on an IEP or 504, like, you know, put us out there as, as a resource, because we all, you know, we're always looking for allies as well, and that's part of the conversation here, is inclusiveness. And I think that when we have allies on our side, that makes this, right, we're, we're living through our actions and not just our words. So I think that that's another huge part of this, and that goes for our educators as well. I mean, I'm fortunate that I get to touch a lot of the special ed teachers, just through my own children's journey, but I'd love to hear from our gen ed teachers and special ed teachers, and how we can support, and the conversations that we can have. Because, you know, we can see it through Lynn's eyes, and through Pam's eyes, but to see it through people who are living it in the classroom, that's another part of this. And I learned that actually through doing the bags with the nurses. It was really wonderful, because I got to go to each school. And I will say, to all of our nurses in the district, we have a really wonderful set of nurses. Every office I walked into, they were warm, they were engaging, they were excited, they knew what was going on inside the bag, like, honestly, I didn't have to really explain AAC, which I was very impressed with in and of itself, but no, we, things like that, where how, how can we support you as a CPAC? When we talk about donations and things, what can we work towards? How can we support and really make this an inclusive community? So we want to hear from you, lean on us and, and reach out, please.
And even being a resource, I think, to, to gen ed teachers, and, and making sure that they understand, I know last year, we did initiative, where we kind of said a, we sent a thank you to all teachers on behalf of CPAC. We kind of did a initiative where we gave some CPAC swag out, to just get our new branding out there, and name, so people would recognize us. That was helpful. But I do think that additional support in, in all teachers knowing that we are a resource for their, for their families would be wonderful, and that it's not, and it shouldn't be a, only when you have a problem, that you, you're like, oh, I should, I guess I should call CPAC. You can have a question, you can just want to volunteer for something, or say it'd be great to have a meetup, or my child would really love this, if they can meet peers in this way, or, I think that would be helpful. And I think also some engagement, perhaps from families with children who have less visible disabilities, who, you know, maybe feel like, oh, well, I don't need to be involved in CPAC, nothing impacts my child now. Well, maybe it will, and also, your children and other children, and all children are part of our community. So kind of getting away from those barriers, I think any support in that manner would be helpful.
Excuse me, can I add something?
Sure.
Here, this is easy. Pick a microphone. I never say anything, so it's not usually a problem, I don't need a microphone. But I just, I wanted to echo what Sasha and Lauren are saying about the partnership. I was fortunate, I had the opportunity yesterday, to have all of the K through five special education staff, teachers, TAs, OTs, PTs, speech-language people, school psychologists, together, virtually, for PD. From, we started two, we, we, we went through right till four o'clock. We talked about unifying our understanding of special education programs, of remembering about least restrictive environment, and that the goal is to give students just enough services to be successful, not an overload. This is a case where more isn't always the answer. We had a great discussion, I talked to them about the fact that we're doing some work on a subcommittee, and, you know, framed that for them. I also highlighted for them, the whole staff, that CPAC is here to be a partner for us. I know, and I, I've been quite transparent and frank with CPAC in general, about in the past, there have been some staff members, excuse me, allergies are getting me, some staff- staff members who felt intimidated and/or on the defensive when CPAC had been looped in, to, you know, with a family. But I reiterated and talked about the fact that you really are here to help us, to partner with us. We have this, we have the same shared goal. We talked a lot about the general education, special education connections, about what are the obstacles and roadblocks to having more of our students have their services in the general education classroom. It was the start of a really great conversation. It's not over, but I did want, it's, it's sometimes very interesting and, and exciting to hear the connections that are already happening, you know, from the work of the committee, the work that CPAC does in general, and then how it's connecting to some of the PD work that we're doing, so.
All right, so I know that it's going to take time to come up with an overall timeline, but what can we, when can we expect you to be able to come back and say, okay, this is, this is the plan going forward, after you're able to get, you know, some more stakeholders together, work through it? When would be a good time for you to be able to come back?
I think it would be best if we could answer that question after our meeting on Monday. If we could, you know, email the school committee remotely, I'd, I'd like to get kind of all of our stakeholders on the same page about what is realistic. I can say something, but I am not, I am not Ms. Ando or Sonia. So, I want to make sure that with all of their other workload and kind of this, you know, we're, we're taking that into account, because they are kind of the ones with a lot of that data, and they have to produce that, even if some of us may be looking at it or doing that work. So, with that in mind, I think we could probably produce a better timeline, you know, in the next couple meetings, and we can certainly kind of break that down for you.
Very great.
And I appreciate it, because it is important. I think that especially as we're planning as a community about where we see our district going, there are financial decisions that need to be made, and so it's better to have this work done a bit more quickly, as long as it's thorough, so that it matches the financial decisions that we as community stakeholders need to make in the future.
Yeah. Well, and I think also just what, what you're doing is so exciting, keeping momentum going, and, and, you know, I think that's exciting.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you, I really appreciate it.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
All right, so we are going to move into new business. We have school choice participation. This is something we do every year. Ms. Lathrop, you want to speak a little bit more on that?
So the Department of Education, Education, DES, we call it, requires the school committee, thank you, requires the school committee to hold a public hearing every year to consider whether or not our district will participate as a receiving district in the school choice program during the upcoming school year. We are, we need to notify DESI of our decision regarding school choice prior to June 1st. This is the first read of this. There will be a public hearing and a vote that will be held on the May 29th meeting. The administration is recommending to the North Andover School Committee that the vote, that you vote not to participate as a receiving district in the school cho, choice program for the 2025-2026 school year.
I know historically we have voted no to participate in, and can you just kind of briefly go over some of those reasons why it's not in our best interest?
I think particularly this year, we're going through a lot of transition already, and if we were to become a school choice district, that means that our students have the opportunity to, it means any other town has an opportunity to elect a school choice into our town, and to accept those students. And I think that currently where we are in terms of our own transition, in terms of what the work that we have done, keeping our class sizes where they are, that it wouldn't be in the best interest of North Andover to open ourselves up to accepting new students, more students outside of our community.
Can I ask something? I'm struggling to understand why anyone would ever want to do it. Look, what's, what is the benefit to a community to doing that? What would be the benefit to being willing to take?
I can hazard a guess at that.
Tuition, there is, you get money. It's a fund.
Well, it's not just the tuition, it is that if you have certain places where you, class sizes are very small, then you get the tuition, which pays essentially the average cost, but your marginal cost, because you're inserting the student into a basically under, you don't need a new teacher.
So if you have an under-enrolled, if you have an under-enrolled district, then it would make sense.
So that's why what Superintendent said makes so much sense, when she's worked so hard to get class sizes where we want them.
Right. I clearly see why we don't.
It's not necessarily welcome to have, you know, a couple more children, because...
Right. I was just trying to understand when it would be in the district's interest to do it, and the answer is, it's an, it's an under-enrolled district.
Does it follow if we, if we would have decided, decide to be a receiving district, does that mean we're also can be then ascending district? Do those, do those go hand in hand?
You can always be a descending district, so if a family in North Andover wanted to participate in school choice, they would just look for a district that participates in school choice.
So our voting no doesn't affect North Andover students being able to make a choice of classes?
This is strictly letting other, being a receiving district of students outside of our district coming with their tuition money, but coming to our school.
Correct.
Do we lose many students' choice to other districts?
No, I don't think so. Not, I don't have the numbers on top of my head, but I do get a lot of phone calls from other districts asking if we participate in school choice, and I think it's a little tricky. I think because that law exists, people assume that the answer is always yes, and I have to do a lot of explaining that we don't participate in school choice in North Andover.
Thank you.
All right, so our public hearing on this will be on, at the May 29th meeting. All right, we have the updated bullying and prevention plan.
Okay. Tonight you are receiving three packets. So you are receiving a packet that is the bully prevention and intervention plan that we currently have in place. You are receiving the proposed version that is all cleaned up, bullying and prevention and intervention plan. And then you are receiving a red line version, so that you can see the changes from what we have currently to what is being proposed. So I just want to tell you why you have those three. The district bully and prevention intervention plan was last updated in 2010, so we actually are a little bit delayed in updating our bully and prevention intervention plan. This plan was recently reviewed and updated by the law firm, Anadale, McVeigh and Joyce. They've recommended numerous changes to and refinements to the plan, and they've recollected a red line draft of the current plan, as well as a clean copy with the edits incorporated for the committee's convenience. The red line draft includes detailed comments relative to each of the proposed changes, and additional information can be provided if requested. The public will have an opportunity to comment on the proposed changes up until the next meeting. So these documents after tonight will be placed on the school's website. There'll be time to review. This is part of Massachusetts General Laws. We will ask the public to please submit comments when you see this on the website. There is a superintendent's web, superintendent's email, it's just superintendent@northandoverpublicschools.com, but we are asking that the public submit their comments or questions to that email for review.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
The red line version, the red represents the things, just so everyone knows, the red represents the things being added in or being taken out?
It includes comments relative to each proposed change, so it's the changes that are in red.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think this means you can read that one, and you don't need to read the other two. And you still won't be embarrassed at the next town meeting.
Well, I also want, like, am I, am I reading it in like, ooh, we're getting rid of those red things, or we're adding those red things?
Right. You can, that's why you have the other two, so if you needed to compare it to the current version and what the proposed version is. But there's a lot here, so we're asking that both the committee members and the, the public review these before the next meeting.
Helpful thing for you, Joe. The way Microsoft Word works, the, the stuff on the, on the margins, it'll tell you what's deleted. It'll say deleted.
It says deleted around the sign.
You see what I mean? If you look in the margins, it tells you, I don't know, I'm used to looking at this kind of stuff, but it, it tells you what each, what each thing is, is a deletion or an insertion, it tells you that on the, on the, in the margins.
And when it says deleted, actually the word is no longer there, it's already been deleted. That's why I was confused.
Yeah.
We're going to delete that, or I have already deleted it.
This is, this is Microsoft at its best.
Is there a reason it was reviewed and updated, I mean, by a law firm?
Because the bullying laws have changed, the bully prevention intervention laws have changed, and this is something that, the reason why we keep them on retainer, this would be appropriate to send to this law firm who has expertise in this area. That's why.
That's why, okay. And then is there, is this anything to, then, is this anything just from our education perspective, that then we would go in and have something else to include? I don't, I don't know what I'm, I don't have anything in mind, but, I guess, I don't know, see, it's reviewed by the law, reviewed and updated by the law firm, just kind of makes me, it's, you know, it's all about protecting ourselves, you know, protection of the students and...
And making sure that we are meeting all of our obligations and that we're following the law. I also have sent this to Michelle O'Leary, who's our Director of Social and Emotional Learning, who's also our Title IX Director, and so I've, I've sent it to her for, her review as well.
To making sure just that, besides following all the laws, that we're also doing what we think is right for our students as well, in this area.
Correct. This is a much-needed, I, we, I initiated this, our bullying and prevention plan is out of date, we need to have a more up-to-date plan. We should, we by law should have a more up-to-date plan, so this is imperative that we do this work.
Okay, awesome, thank you. So it's not just that it's reviewed, but the law firm is also reviewed by our experts in social and emotional learning, so it's the right thing for our students in our school district. Awesome, thank you.
And a question about, do we do, do we currently do PD on this topic, and will we be revising it once this is approved?
We do, we, we work with the same law firm, who will come in and do professional development with our administrators, because they are the ones who do the investigation if we have a bullying investigation that's brought forward. So they come usually during some of our summer retreat, that's time that they would come and do any updates, revise. We work with the law firms in terms of the forms that we share with families. When we initiate a bullying investigation, they would update that and work with our administrators.
And what about, about staff?
And then typically our administrators then would offer PD to the staff.
Okay. So that, so we'll be revising that once this is...
Yes.
If this is updated, then we'll revise the training that we do.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
All right, any other comments? Okay, so just a reminder to email the superintendent before May 29th with any questions, concerns on that policy.
And these documents will be uploaded to the website for the community.
All right, we are back to public comments.
Oh, sorry, Madam Chair, unless you, maybe you moved it forward before I got here?
We did, we had moved it up.
The upper turf, oh, okay.
Yeah, it was taken out of order while Mr. Landry and Mr. Nugent were here.
Oh, okay. Was there, was there any vote required on that, or?
It's, it is required, it's required to be voted on, voted on at town meetings, so the proposal, it's in the packet. It's what they're, you can read through it.
I'm well aware of it, from, I'm also on the field, full disclosure, I'm on the fields committee, so I know.
But we haven't voted, it'll be, it'll be voted at town meeting, and then they'll bring it back to us the meeting after the 29th, where then we'll make that recommendation.
Okay, so SC votes May 29th on, on whether to proceed, assuming it passes town meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for that.
Yes, it was just a first week.
Okay, yep.
All right, public comment, open that up if we have any public comment.
Matthew Rupia, 61, Burnwood Circle. I just have two questions. I wasn't able to make the transition phone call yesterday. I don't know if this is appropriate to ask you questions here, or if you want me to email or anything, but my concerns were the kids who were at the Kittredge. My daughter is going to the Franklin School next year. There's only a couple people that she's friends with in the class. My concern is that they're going to be in a different class from her, and that she's going to be kind of on her own, getting thrown into a, a new class with a group of kids who already have their own friends and everything else. Is there any way that we could know whether she's going to be in a class before we decide to request another school? There's no way to do that?
Yeah, you can go ahead and give an answer, that's fine. No, is the short answer. Class lists won't come out until, I think it's August 18th, but we have talked at many of our meetings that we are working closely with this current staff to identify the, the students that are moving forward. Staff is making recommendations of students who might need to be together, and we have a very extensive school placement process that we are putting in, in place this year that's taking that into consideration. And then each of the principals have emailed the families about ways that families can give input to the principals in terms of placement, so that's an opportunity for you to, to place that down there. Our goal is to make this transition as easy and as smooth as possible, so we are going to try our very best to make those kinds of requests happen for our kids. Do you want to add anything?
Yeah. Your child's current teacher will be able to meet with the receiving school about placement of all of our students, and so if this is something you're concerned about, please bring it up to your child's current teacher, who will be involved with the placement at the new school.
Sure.
Yep.
Awesome, thank you. Appreciate it.
Of course, I think that's good information to have out there. All right, any other public comment? Okay, so we have our community chat, just a reminder, May 8th at the Senior Center. I don't know if we have a start time yet, but when we...
I assume 6:30, because that's when they've been in the past, but I don't want to...
I don't, I don't know, but I'm...
We'll post it.
Seeing that from Michelle, yeah.
Okay, yeah, we'll make sure to try and get that out as much as possible before the 8th. But it'll be in the evening here at the Senior Center, May 8th. Our next meeting, well, we have town meeting, May 13th at the North Andover High School. Again, we encourage as many people as, that can come out, to come out.
Do we have a pre-town meeting, school committee meeting?
We do, we do have one that is open to the public. Are we meeting at 5:00 or 5:30? There'll be an agenda on that one as well.
We'll post that, usually it's 5:00 or 5:30.
It's either 5:00 or 5:30.
I think we're reserved for the conference room. If there is actually things that had to be done on the agenda, we might have to move it to a larger space, because the conference room, usually it's us eating dinner, but we reserve it just in case we have to actually do something.
But for practical purposes, we'd probably plan on 5:00, for our, for our own planning, to be reasonable.
Yeah, but that is a public school committee meeting before town meeting, and then we will go into town meeting. Our next meeting after that will be on May 29th. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
You do.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
I thought you were going to come with a comment.
Second.
All right, Mr. Hicks.
Yes.
Mr. Moskovich.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Yes.